We're going to call the virtual regular school board meeting for the Stevens Point Area Public School District for Monday, September 13th, to order. And we will note that this is an all-virtual meeting on Monday, September 13, 2021, through the use of WebEx due to district COVID-19 mitigation strategies and other related health and safety factors. Please note that the method in which school board meetings will be conducted, virtual or in person, will be evaluated on a monthly basis in conjunction with district COVID-19 mitigation strategies and other health and safety factors. We will continue to livestream all of our open meetings on YouTube. We are providing public access to our meeting this evening through livestream. We also have the ability to accommodate specific needs of members of the district who are unable to access the virtual remote meetings. We will move into the meeting opening and roll call. Carlyn, could you do the roll call and verification of quorum, please?
Mr. Mansky.
Here.
Ms. Va.
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Mr. Wade. Mr. Wade.
Mike? You're on mute.
Okay, well, we know Mike is there. Ms. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Rano.
Here.
Ms. Erler.
Here.
We will have someone reach out to Mike to make sure you're connected. We will move into three, which are pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the might of the United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic, which stands one nation under God, and to be indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move into item four, which is public comments. We received three email public comments, which was noted with respect to our virtual meeting, that we were accepting public comments by email. The first email is from Elizabeth Potter Nelson, and the email reads, "I would like to thank everyone for the decision to require face masks. As a parent of students too young to be vaccinated, masks have allowed them to return safely. All three of my students are excited about their return, and I'm excited to watch their academic and emotional growth." We have an email from Catherine Gottwald, Katie Gottwald, and it reads, "Agenda item, district pillar, developing and retaining quality staff. Strategic objective, foster united culture through communication, collaboration, and all staff development focused on student outcomes. Comments: In an effort to achieve this pillar and objective, I support the efforts of the Board and the Superintendent to keep students and staff safe and healthy through requiring face masks and following CDC safety protocols. In-person learning is what sets up our school communities to be successful." Finally, we have an email that was submitted by Will Stites, and it reads, "Pursuant to the Board's strategic objective to promote healthy, sustainable, and financially stable learning environments, I commend the Board for following science-based measures to preserve student and staff health. Polls show that public support is strong for mask mandates, and evidence shows that masking is essential to keep schools healthy in the face of COVID-19. I urge the Board to continue following sound, scientific, and medical advice to keep students, Those are the three comments that the Board received with respect to email comments. Oh, and I do want to note presenters who are at this meeting, the small number of us who are, if we are presenting and we feel that we can be better understood in the presentation by removing our masks during the time we are actively speaking, we will be doing so. So I will move into item five, which is Communication Report, Sarah O'Donnell.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Sarah.
Included in your packet this evening is an updated communications dashboard, new school year, new dashboard. I've included a lot of the same information for you, but also wanted to dive just a little bit deeper into some of the data. So that top view is still traditional, so we're looking at TV, online print, considering how many times we've seen media coverage, and then what that impact was across audiences. AVE is Advertising Value Estimate for those who are a little bit newer to this dashboard. And again, we're looking at if the district had gone out and tried to purchase the amount of media, that is the estimated cost. It's a guess, it's not necessarily a real number, but tries to give an idea of the value of that effort. The next box is digital media, so here we're looking at Facebook pages, Twitter pages, Instagram. There are two Facebook pages. The first one is all 28 of the district's kind of more official pages, and then the next one is just the district channel. So here, again, we're looking for impressions, which is how many times someone has seen the content that is put out on that channel. Engagement, so how many times an audience has looked at that. And then for links, excuse me, content that includes a link, how many times was that clicked on? So how many times did we get a conversion? Below that, I wanted to introduce you to some tagging that I've been doing in the background with our content, looking at our outbound messaging, so really trying to track what are we talking about on a consistent basis to our audiences, and then comparing that to our inbound messaging, so what topics are they giving us back that maybe we need to address further, or see if we need to include that more in our communications? So the yellow boxes highlight things that we aren't necessarily pushing out, but that are really coming back to us. Below that, Own Digital has not changed, just the look of that has changed, so that's views and engagement on kind of really our own e-newsletters, web, mobile stuff that we really have a lot of control over. And then Project Highlights, I just wanted to draw your attention to some things we did in August, including the Better Together internal and external video launches. We did put together a new kind of bottom hashtag logo for the year, for anyone who's interested in using that Better Together messaging. And then I'm starting up some mini sessions. I'm really excited for those, kind of to run staff back through, you know, just a quick 15, 20 minutes of, here are some, you know, tools and tricks and tips for you, and then we'll be relaunching some branded student highlights, staff highlights, and social content for the year. And I'm happy to take questions.
Do any Board members have questions for Sarah with respect to the dashboard?
Sarah, I do have a question. Does this information, other than our parents, does this go out to the community at all? Do they have access to this dashboard? If they don't have to...
Can you repeat who you would like to have access to the dashboard, Chris?
Yeah. Other than the parents, and do people in the community have access to the dashboard?
They'd have access if they wanted to go ahead and click in through the school board meeting. This is really an internal document. It's a way for me to track whether or not our efforts are successful, if we're getting the outcomes that we want to see. All of the communication strategies tie back to those four pillars, so I'm tracking, you know, are we focused on recruitment for posts? Are we focused on, you know, are we telling staff stories? Are we telling student stories? Are those for the purposes of student engagement? Are they strictly for the purposes of updating? What channels are we using for what communications? No, it's a little in the nerd weeds for those who aren't kind of into that, but I do feel it's important for the Board to have an idea of kind of, that, you know, there is some strategy and tactic behind what we're trying to communicate out, you know, to all stakeholders, you know, not just parents, students, staff members, but community as well.
Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Rob, do you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. It looks like there's an increase across the Board from 2020. Is there any indications to the reason for such an increase? Is it more messaging, better messaging, more people are engaged? Is there any thoughts as to why that's happening?
Consistency would be one piece of that, so being a little bit more deliberate with channels and messaging, I would say also it's trying to tailor some of that, so the same post that we'll have on Facebook is not necessarily the same post we'll have on Instagram. It might be similar content, but tweaked a little bit, just based on audiences that we know are there. Other than that, I would, you know, it's great to see those up arrows. They will come down, right? That's just, it's also a function of back to school. It's a time when a lot of folks are engaged. I'd also say some of the engagement that we're getting right now, we might not necessarily consider to be positive engagement. I would say the same for the media coverage above, right? So not all of that engagement would be something that I would classify as something we necessarily want for those channels, but it is happening and needs to be captured and addressed.
Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Any other questions or comments from Board members with respect to Sarah's present? All right, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, we will move into the Superintendent's report.
First, I'd like to recognize Board Member Mike Wade for reaching WASB Level 2 in terms of professional development. Thank you, Mike, for your continued interest and leadership in school board activities. Additionally, the WASB Region 5 meeting, many of you have been or attended in the past, is Wednesday, October 13th, at the Holiday Inn in Rothschild. If you are interested in going, get ahold of Carlyn. I believe there's one person that signed up. Typically, we have quite a few, so if you're interested in going to the Regional 5 meeting, it's the Holiday Inn, it's in the evening, somewhere in the neighborhood of 5:30, probably till 8:30, something of that nature. Again, let Carlyn know. We are the recipient of four trees, thanks to the Trees for Threes program sponsored by the American Transmission Company and the Milwaukee Bucks. This is, I believe, the third year in that partnership, and the Milwaukee Bucks give a tree for every three-point shot throughout the season, and they shot 549 threes. Therefore, they divide them up throughout the state of Wisconsin, and we will be receiving four, specifically Kennedy Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, Ben Franklin, and McDill. The beginning of the school year 2122, we've actually had a great start. We're here five days in person, and of course, that's been our goal, and that will continue to be the goal as we move throughout the school year. Most of our school activities are happening, to include spectators at all of our events and fans. We do have a bus driver shortage. If you've been watching the news, you'll see that's across the country, and it certainly is hitting home. Unfortunately, we had a number of COVID cases about the time school started, and we had to scramble literally the day before. We weren't expecting so. Apologize to those families that were disrupted as it relates to some last-minute routing changes. But again, we ask the parents to continue to be patient because there is a significant shortage of bus drivers. Obviously, we're virtual tonight. Due to the pandemic, we've gone back to virtual meetings for the unforeseen future to comply with our COVID-19 mitigation protocols. Unfortunately, we have been informed by a number of citizens, community members, that they would not comply or have no intent to comply with our safety protocols, so we believe it's in everyone's interest to continue virtually until further notice. I continue to receive many of communications, both for those that support our protocols, those that don't support our protocols, to include, as you're aware, a potential recall of five members, to also include a petition that was just served to our district with 350 signatures indicating they support what we're doing. So obviously, there's still a lot of chatter on both sides of that issue. That said, our goal is to keep kids in school, and for the most part, we are. We have 24 positive cases with students, 82 that are quarantined, and staff, we have one positive and three quarantined. That's all I have.
Do Board members have any questions, up Craig, with respect to reopening a school, his report?
Nope.
I see none. I have just one question. I know Boston School Forest was wound up with some damage at the last storm. Could you just bring the Board up to date on that?
Yeah, sorry, I missed that. That's fairly significant. Unfortunately, the Boston School Forest saw a significant storm, and the home on the property was struck with lightning and has significant damage. I haven't read the official report. It's likely to be totaled. And of course, we have a staff member that's living there. There will be the high schools starting a fundraiser for that particular person that lives there, and of course, we'll have to take some time to step back and decide what we're going to want to do with that piece of property. However, that said, I was in the property a couple days after the lightning struck. In terms of where people were standing, we're very, very fortunate that all we had was a building that burnt down. So it was, it's very serious, but it could have been much more serious than a building.
All right. Thank you, Craig. We'll move into the consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight includes the minutes of the prior school board meeting for August 9th, 21, the approval of the schedule of monthly bills, and employment recommendations. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have one?
So moved.
So moved by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second, Jeff.
Seconded by Jeff Ebel. Any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor, I will have Carlyn call the roll due to the monthly bills.
Mr. Wade.
Internet problems.
Internet problems, okay. Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Pope.
Was that me?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Rano.
Yes.
Ms. Va.
Yes.
Mr. Mansky.
Yes.
Ms. Erler.
Yes.
Okay. That was nine to internet problems.
And we will continue to work with Mike Wade. He is having some internet problems at his end.
Going in and out.
It's going in and out. So we will move into item seven, which is Business Services. Mike would usually run this, but I'll go ahead and do that. We are looking at item A, which is the Financial Summary Referendum Progress Report, and I'm going to turn that over to Tom and Mike.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to report on this point, the referendum, we have paid to date $59.3 million. We've issued contracts to date in the amount of $72.7 million, and with that, the contract balance is about $13.4 million. So we're heading on target. We're watching everything closely. We have Jefferson, Kennedy, Madison occupied. Glover-Whiting is done, occupied. Roosevelt's done, occupied. So is Washington. Ben Franklin, PJ's, Spash. Now we will be starting, and also McKinley. We'll be starting work on McDill, and then the transportation facility, as you approve those coming up. So there's still lots to do.
Do Board members have any questions, Tom, with respect to the referendum update? Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
We'll move into item B, which is the Review of Financial Statements.
Evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can see me okay.
Yep.
Okay, the financial reports that I submitted are through July, so they're going back a couple months. I only submitted one report, a balance sheet report this month, and the reason for that is that July is kind of a transitional month, as we move from one financial or one fiscal year to the next, and as a result, there's some payables and receivables that show up in the July reports, and make those reports appear a little bit confusing. So for that reason, I just submitted the one report. Those payables and receivables have cleared out as of now, and the August reports will look more like you're used to seeing. I don't have anything else to report. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Do Board members have any questions, Mike? So Mike, I have a question, and for me, I think I understand why this is the case, but I think it would be helpful just to explain. So we note for Fund 10, in terms of our cash balance, that we currently have a negative balance of about $2.9 million.
I'm sorry, my dog just saw a deer out the window.
[laughing].
Okay. Are you asking about what I mean by receivables and payables?
No, I'm asking about the balance sheet highlights, where you note that Fund 10 currently has a negative balance of 2.9.
Oh, for cash?
Correct. Can you just, again, I think we as a Board understand that, but you read that and you wonder what the heck is going on, so could you just explain that?
Yeah, that's really a good question, and something that I can tell you, when I began this position, I wondered about too. That actually means that I'm doing a pretty decent job with cash flow, to be honest, because what our cash equals is it's cash and investments together, and so our investments have a large positive balance, where cash shows up in the books as a negative balance often, because I'm waiting till the very last moment, as when we pay a bill, it doesn't necessarily come out of the bank as soon as we put it in our books. So if I wait till the last possible moment to move it from investments to cash, we can earn a little bit more interest, and then often that shows in our books a negative cash balance, even though our bank balance is always positive. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. All right, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, Mike? All right, thank you.
I had a question, I had one.
Oh, go ahead, Gee.
In regards to that Fund 10, what, I see that at the bottom of that page in reserve, it says, "District's fund balance is $21 million." Is that a different fund? Are we talking about the same fund there?
The fund balance of $21 million is where the fund balance was at at the end of July.
Okay.
If you look at where it starts out, where it says, "Beginning of the year," it'll show like $24 million something. That's the end of June. So that fund balance fluctuates a lot over the course of the year. There's two times during the year when it gets really low, it gets close to, actually gets really close to zero, but in June is when it's kind of at its peak. And so if you look at the beginning balance, you're seeing the June ending fund balance for that year.
And that was negative?
That was $24 million something.
Oh. Were Fund 10 and then the fund balance, are they two different funds? Or are you referring to two different funds, or is...
No. The fund balance, I'm moving back to my house now, the deer are gone. Sorry about that. The fund balance is the equity in Fund 10. There's also a fund balance for every fund that we have out there. Fund 21 has a fund balance, Fund 27, et cetera. It's just the equity at that point in time.
So what, I apologize, everybody knows this, I don't, what balance is a safe balance to keep throughout the year so that we don't go in the hole?
Well, DPI does not provide us with that. They don't tell us what fund balance we need to keep, so we rely on our auditors and also Board policy on how much we want to have at that point in time, so in June. That's why we tend to look at it in June. It's hard to say, Gee, but the goal of it is that we don't have to do any short-time borrowing. So when we hit those low points during the year, if we go below zero in that fund balance, we may have to borrow in the short run, and anytime you do that, you have to pay interest, and there's an extra expense that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So we try to maintain a fund balance that prevents us from short-term borrowing. And so far, in the little bit of time that I've been doing this, we've avoided that, and I think we historically have avoided short-term borrowing for some time.
Can I jump in? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
We do have a Board policy that spells out that we will make sure we have a fund balance not less than a figure in the lower 20s. I can't remember exactly, 21% or something. There is no fixed number that fits all school districts and all sizes and all businesses. It really is a matter of many factors that come to play, but just very generally, if we're holding around 24%-ish, that's a number where usually we don't wind up in the hole or during the year, and that's a pretty solid number usually. It can vary, but is that what you're after, Gee?
Yeah, I think so. I'm sure it matters when you look at the balance, too, but on the whole, I'd say anything over $20 million is what you're saying, is a safe amount of money to have?
Certainly in the mid $20 million for our size district. Of course, that varies by district, but so that's why we kind of go by a percent rather than a dollar amount, but something around 24%, 25%. The fund balance is not a fixed number. That changes almost daily, because it's a byproduct of the difference between assets and liabilities, so as we pay bills or get invoices, that number goes up or goes down and changes as it drops, and then it comes back up. We've done a number of workshops on that, and we're going to be doing one in January. I'll be presenting along with DPI on a presentation, and we'll touch on that, too. And like Mike pointed out, on the first Monday in, excuse me, is it, it's in the first, yeah, the first Monday in December is when we get our first aid check. is when we get our first aid check, state aid check. And just prior to that is our lowest point in the year. And sometimes that gets, you know, kind of close.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, this is Chris. Just a quick question. We have not had to short-term borrow in quite a while. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Tom, it might be helpful. I know a couple years back, you provided the board with a graph that showed the fund balance and what happened to it over the course of a 12-month period. You know, from July to July. And since we have a number of new board members on the board, that might be a helpful graph for us bring, to bring back to the board members. I think you even did it over like several years to just show how that, how that fund balance drops until we get those first payments from the state.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. That is exactly the presentation I was talking about that we do at the
Yep.
fall and at the January convention, school board convention, et cetera.
Yeah, so that might be helpful just to provide that graphic to school board members. We can maybe get that out to the board this week.
Yeah, I can, I can present it at a board meeting. It might be a little easier to
That, perfect.
provide some explanation because just, just to throw the chart at you might be not fair.
All right, well, let's, then let's plan on that for next month. As part, maybe as part of this present on the financial statements. That would be helpful. All right.
No problem.
Excellent. Any other questions of Tom or Mike with respect to the financial statements? Hearing none, I will move into item nine, which is educational services. A is the 2021 summer school report. And I believe we have Darla, Mansky and Jen Melville here to provide us with information on that.
Yes. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
So with summer school this year, we were able to kick things off and get students back into the buildings. Due to construction, along with a few other things, we had to realign again this year. So we had to use buildings that were available to us. So this year we realigned and kindergarten through fourth grade was held at McDill, Washington and Roosevelt. Kindergarten through sixth grade was held at Kennedy to be able to include all those students. Grades five and six, along with youth in college through UWSP, were held at Plover Whiting. And all secondary, seven through 12, was held at Spash this year. So we're going to continue to look at that, continue to look at what buildings are available for us next year. One of the key highlights this year was that transportation was expanded to all students. Previous to this, it was only available for students pre-K to eighth grade. And we really needed to remove that barrier in particular for our secondary students. After the pandemic and the learning loss we experienced and really that graduation crisis of making sure students were earning credits, we were able to offer transportation to our secondary students and ninth through 12th graders. We're happy to report 42% of our secondary students actually use transportation services. So that was huge in getting them access. We're going to continue to work with the transportation department and shore up some of that and look at different times and start times for buildings to either reboot, either reduce bus times and shorten some of those. But that was a really big win for some of our secondary students. To address some of the different learning losses this year, in particular for our younger learners in K-2 or E-learners, we offered some online reading supports with our different, with our district reading specialists. And one of the big losses this year was that due to the swimming pool being down at PJ's, we were, we had to reduce a number of sections of our swim program. And if you look in numbers in a little bit, if you look in that chart, you'll see that we were down in enrollments in a lot of areas. And one of that is really due to our swim lessons. Not only was it that we were down a whole pool, there is a nationwide shortage of lifeguards due to the impacts of COVID that we were not anticipating. So everyone's certification had lapsed and we were not able to, to find certified lifeguards to offer swim lessons at all times. So we are, we're working, we're working on addressing that with offering a lifeguard course at Spash this coming year so that we have students being certified along the way. And then we can say, "We've got a job for you this summer." So any questions about some of those key highlights that had been outlined in that portion of the report?
One of the things that you'll notice when you look at those enrollment numbers is that we had a difficult time with trying to compare it, you know, to last year. Because last year was such an anomaly where we had just, you know, we had virtual for a while and then we went face to face. So we didn't feel like it was fair to compare our numbers this year with last year's because it was so different. So we compared, we did a, you know, the, compared from 2019 to 2021. So you'll see that the comparison's a little bit different than what is typically reported out with our summer school report.
In addition, some of the comparisons were a little bit difficult. We were definitely not only limited with the changes with, with the impacts of COVID, along with some building construction things, but really we had just a hard time also being able to hire staff. And that was really because a lot of staff really needed a break. Last year was really trying on our staff and so they needed the time away this summer. We graciously thank those that agreed to help us out this year. There were some who at the last minute agreed to, to come on board and we appreciate that. But also understood that they needed that time to kind of recharge and rejuvenate their batteries. So we're looking forward to doing some different things with some staffing that Darla will allude to in her portion a little bit later on. Enrollment in the upper grades was definitely significantly impacted by COVID last year with the amount of E-learning that students were doing and the amount of time they spent on the computer. A lot of parents just said they needed time away. They needed time to be kids and to do other things. So they, a lot of them took a break as well. Any questions about that part?
Do board members have any questions about the numbers? So, so I guess just looking at it for me, the bottom line is that we had 1,200, a 1,200 drop is swimming. And then we clearly had about 1,000 dropped with grades five, six. I mean, that's
Yes, and when we look
Go ahead. That, but that accounts for almost two-thirds of the drop we saw.
Yes, absolutely. And part of that was is at that time, one of the things that we're also finding out as we continue to go through this, two years ago in programming, almost three years ago in programming, students were signing up for a lot of multiple classes. So they were enrolled in multiple things at the same time. And so because we couldn't enroll and we didn't have the staff to run all of those things, students couldn't be multiple, you know, have multiple classes going at the same time. So they might have been enrolled in, in a class during the morning, but then they were enrolled in some of our camps in the afternoon. We just couldn't do some of the things that we had done, like, you know, the mindfulness camp in the afternoon and other things like that. So we're hoping next year we'll be able to implement some of those programs again. And we're going to be reaching out to staff as Darla will talk a little bit and see what other things we can kind of add to that catalog to bring those numbers back up.
Do any board members have any questions about the report with respect to summer school this year?
I did have a question. When will you get some feedback from, from parents regarding summer school this year?
When we, Chris, I just wanted to make sure that I heard you. When will we get feedback?
Yeah, when do you, when will you get feedback this year?
So we've been taking feedback from parents and really talking to parents all along in regards to different things. Are you asking about more of a formal survey of different things like that?
Right. Normally you do a survey.
Yeah, and this year we have not done that yet.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Rob, I just kind of grabbed this since I'm here and you're virtual, so.
That's fine with me. Not a problem.
Okay. We'll move into summer school plan 2022.
So based on our experience with the, the changes of 2021 to that program, observations, discussions and feedback from students, ongoing feedback from parents and staff, we want to recommend continuing the K-12 summer school program as is with some changes for 2022. We want to reassess the three-week course offerings due to state reporting requirements for transportation. One of the things that we found out this year was the fact that in order for transportation to count that student as, as a number, they have to have been an attendant or riding the bus a minimum of 14 days. And in three weeks, if it's a three-week program, because we go four days a week, that's 12. So a student could enroll in a three-week program and it didn't count as, as a, as a number according to the state. So, so we minimized the three-week programs this year and made them, made them six-week programs. So we want to take a look at that again, really kind of dig deep and see what, how we can adjust for that. We want to reassess course fees aligned with the DPI fee spending requirements. We want to survey staff to develop new course offerings. One of the things that we have talked about is we want to work with human resources to hire staff prior to students enrollment into courses right now. And it's been, it's been practiced for the last several years that we have students and we create, we have this, this course catalog, which is beautiful and all these courses. We have students enroll and at the same time that they're enrolling, we hire staff. What we found out this year especially was that staff was finding something else. Either they weren't going, they didn't want to, they needed a break. Or even our student teacher population, we had a hard time keeping them here in point. So what we want to do is, starting in October, is really take a look at our courses that are offered, reach out to staff to see if they have any, any suggestions or like any proposals for new courses. And we want to hire staff before we send out that catalog and do enrollment. So based on hiring, this is what we can offer. Because we, we know that students and parents were disappointed this year when there were classes canceled due to either low enrollment or we couldn't get them staffed. So we want to avoid that. For transportation, we want to, we want to take a look at school start times. And we want to work with transportation to kind of take a look at that. That was one of the suggestions that they had made to us was if we're going to provide that transportation K-12, we need to start looking at some adjusted start times. So bus drivers can do like a double route. We want to continue secondary transportation services. And like I said, work with human services to hire staff prior to enrollment. In this recommendation, we have the proposed dates of June 13th through July 21st. Elementary locations will be determined, of course, by construction and what's available for us. And then we want to house secondary like at Spash like we did this year.
So are there any, are there any questions of, with respect to what's being proposed for summer school for next year?
I had a question. When you talk about making more courses and, and surveying staff to develop new courses, how does that affect the overall budget?
The overall budget for summer school?
Well, yeah. I mean, obviously it's going, it costs money to offer new classes, but do the courses, are they, do they, you charge fees. Do the fees pay for the courses or does that another, more hit on the budget, you know?
So summer school is a unique, is a very unique funding compared to everything else that we do within the district. And the higher that we can get enrollment and the more courses that we offer, it is actually more advantageous to the district. So we make sure that we run our courses with a certain number of students. But then if you look like the numbers from a few years ago when they had gone up, that actually helps with revenue and different things like that.
Okay, thank you.
We received, Gee, 40% of FTE as it relates to summer school students. So typically speaking, in, in most Wisconsin schools, summer school tends to be a source of revenue.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other question with respect to the proposed recommendations for the 2022 summer school program? Hearing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the recommendations for the 2022 summer school program as presented.
So moved.
That's a motion by Mansky. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who, who did I have? Judy was the second. So I've got a motion by Mansky, a second by Ranol for approving the recommendations as presented. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? So the motion carries. So we are moving into 13A, which are our future meetings. And our next meeting will be set for, our school board meeting will be set for October 11th. Our next committee meetings are tentatively set for October 4th. As we noted at the beginning of the meeting, we will be continuing to monitor whether we as a board will be having virtual meetings or in-person meetings as well as whether we will be starting up committee meetings as we move into October. So we are now moving into item B, which are school board goals 2021, 2022 and our operating protocols. We as a board had discussed these at our, our retreats this summer. And we had a group of three board members who were just taking a closer look at the protocols. And so I guess I'm going to turn that to you guys to tell us if you have any recommended changes with, with respect to the protocols that appeared in the packet.
So that actually looked pretty good. The only one that there was discussion really around was item seven, changing the term endless discussion to repetitive discussion. So I'll let Ann or Jeff talk if they have anything else to add.
So I guess I would be looking for a motion from someone with respect to approval of the, those protocols with the one change as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second, Jeff.
Second by Evil. So there's a motion and second to approve those protocols with the change from endless, the term endless to repetitive. Are there, is there any discussion or questions on that motion?
Could I ask a question about one of the other protocols at this time?
Yes.
Okay, number 17, the board will address its behavior by yearly self-evaluation. I don't believe we've done that in the time I've been on the board and I understand why. We had the big gorilla in the room is COVID. But if we're going to put it into our protocols, then I think we'll have to find some way to do that.
Yes, you're exactly right, Gee. And we had, we have done that up until the last basically year, year and a half. So we will look to, we do have, we do have a survey that we had been doing annually and we will make sure that gets done this year.
During this school year?
During this school year, yes.
Okay.
We typically did it right, well, we did it in March so that we had the school board that had been present during that year be present to evaluate it prior to any changes in the board.
So I think it'd be useful, since we haven't had one for a while, then to schedule one for March to make sure we, barring any other unforeseen circumstances, get to do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions with respect to the protocol? And the motion?
No, just thanks, Gee, for, for bringing that up.
All right, all those in All right, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed with nay? Motion carries. The other item is with respect to school board goals. Typically, we as a board have waited until we approved the superintendent's goals. We did so. Those are in the packet. They are support the cabinet through COVID-19 remediation efforts, learning loss, social and mental health, and budget development. The superintendent's second goal is support the transition and work of the EDI coordinator. Goal three is lead the district through a strategic planning process. My suggestion this year, in light of everything else that we are dealing with, is that we as a board consider mirroring the superintendent's goals in terms of supporting the superintendent and administration in implementation of those goals. But I'm opening that up for discussion.
One thing that I'd like to bring up is the number two, the support and transition and work of the EDI coordinator. I know we were going to do that, but of course, things got in the way. And I'm wondering if there's, because he's been, you know, I think he started in July or something like that, and the, well, we hired two people. I haven't met him. I think we'd all like to meet them and have, you know, a training session if we could do that, in person or online, if there's some way that we could do that. I think that'd be helpful to do it sooner rather than later.
We will be doing that, G. We also had some trainings that started last year with Lindsay Bernhagen. And we will be continuing, the staff has been, I believe all of our staff has received two trainings, and it'll be on the set of, third of five. And we will be scheduling the board. Again, we were going to do that as a part of the retreat, just a number of things have stalled that. But there's a five-piece series that we'll be working with Lindsay, and we'll absolutely bring Sam and Gigi to our next board meeting, if nothing else, for introductions. And then they'll be able to talk about the trainings and programming that they've started.
That'd be great. I would ask that if they come to the board meeting to meet everybody, that maybe we could have some dates set by then so they could, you know, have some concrete stuff to start us working on, something like that.
Got it.
Any other comments from the board with respect to board goals this year? Hearing none, I guess I would look for a motion to, as a board, adopt supporting the superintendent and administration in implementation of the superintendent's goals as presented to the board.
So moved, Judy.
That's a motion by Judy. Do I have a second?
Second, Wade.
That's a second by Mike Wade. Any discussion or questions on that motion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with nay? Motion carries. So now we will be looking to move into closed session. I am looking for a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1985, Parten 1, Parten C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to consider administrative contracts, school psychologists, temporary Point 2, school psychologist FTE, secondary curriculum and instruction coordinator. Also to move into closed session under 1985, Parten 1, Parten G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, specifically the statement issued by DA Milefsky. And also going into closed session under 1985, Parten 1, Parten C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the superintendent contract and assistant superintendent contract. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Wade, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will have Carlin call the roll.
Mr. Mansky.
Yes.
Ms. Va.
Yes.
Mr. Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Portson. Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Ranol. Ms. Erler.
Yes. I do want to note to board members that we will be, of course, having everyone check out of this WebEx and check into closed session. I want to note tonight, we actually have asked Dan to stay. In the event we come out of closed into open and take action, again, because this is strictly a virtual meeting, we have asked him to stay so that if we come out of closed and take action, he will be present and able to livestream any of that action due to the fact that we are strictly remote this month. So we're going to, we'll check out a closed session, and then we will go back into open, and then Rob will, excuse me, Dan will be available for live streaming for the public with respect to any action we'll take. Are there any questions about that? All right, we are now in closed session. Give us about 10 minutes to set up the room. Everybody sign out and come back in under closed. Okay, we are back live, and we will be taking action as appropriate as we have come out of closed session. I am looking for a motion to approve Alex Kitchner for the Temporary Secondary Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator for the Stevens Point area Public School District.
So moved.
Motion by Evil, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ranol. So we, are there any questions with respect to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion is approved. I am looking for a motion to approve Lee Kramer's Temporary Additional Point 20 School Psychologist FTE for the Stevens Point area Public School District.
So moved.
Motion by Evil, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ranol. Any discussion or questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed with nay? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve Melissa Lenz as school psychologist for the Stevens Point area Public School District.
So moved.
Motion by Evil, do I have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Barb.
Oh, second by Barb. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion carries. I am looking to accept Craig Gerlach's retirement from our district as superintendent effective June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Ranol, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pope. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion carries. I am looking for a motion to offer Cory Hirschbruner the position of superintendent of the Stevens Point area Public School District effective July 1 of 2022, and to negotiate a contract with her to be acted on by the board at our October meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ranol, do I have a second by, I think it was Mansky? Nope. Oh, Wade.
Second, Wade.
Okay, Wade. So there is a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Matt, do we need a roll call on that?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Any, so no discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed with nay? The motion, vote is unanimous on that motion. I am looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by, motion by Evil, second by Wade, to adjourn. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good week.